Keisha? Okay. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Riverside County Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, September 19th, 2017. We have a full board here today. We'd like to thank all of you for joining us. Our first item on the agenda is to call the meeting to order, which I've done. Karen Barton is not with us today due to the loss of her father, and we will adjourn in his memory next week once we have more information. But today, for our invocation, we have Pam Torres, Principal Accountant with probation. Pam, please come forward. Everybody, please stand and then remain standing after the invocation for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Vice Chairman Washington.
Good morning, members of the board, ladies and gentlemen. I invite all present to join in the invocation. Lord, we thank you for safely bringing us together this September 19th, fresh and crisp morning. Father, we lift up to you the Board of Supervisors, all county employees, and the residents throughout Riverside County. We ask that you bless, protect, and guide us this day. Father, in thanksgiving and reflection, may we have the courage to release ourselves from what holds us back from experiencing freedom and living out our purpose. The purpose could be taking a moment to help someone in need. We thank the individuals that have crossed the paths of those in need and took the time to help. Today, Lord, some will bring light to where there is darkness; some will bring hope to where there is despair; some will forgive where there is hurt. Lord, may our time, thoughts, and actions have their origin in you and be directed to your glory. Amen.
Please be mindful of the great privilege and honor that it is to be an American and renew our pledge to our flag by placing your right hand over your heart and following me. Ready, begin.
Our pledge to allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice.
Thank you, Pam, and thank you Supervisor Washington. We have no presentations this morning, therefore, we're going to go. We have no need for a roll call. All five members are here. Mr. Priamos, our county council, is out this week, and we have his able assistant and deputy, Tiffany North, who's with us today, and of course, our wonderful CEO, George Johnson. So with that, we'll go into any opening comments by members of the board. Fellas, please use your Q requests to speak. Supervisor Washington.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have one item that I'd like to share with the board and the community. We had a very successful and inspiring community cleanup last Saturday that was a partnership among a number of different agencies here at the county, and so I think we have a video ready to roll to just show what occurred on Saturday. And I want to thank all of the participants, especially Waste Resources Department. I see Hans out there. Thank you, Hans, for the participation, also from Code Enforcement. Mark Christian was out, our kind of our third district supervisor for code. We also had Captain Purvis and some of his volunteers as well, and some of the community volunteers that showed up to do a lot of different activities throughout the day. So please roll the video. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Washington. Any other members? Supervisor?
On a single Saturday morning, volunteers, businesses, and government agencies all joined forces to transform the Val Vista community. Third District Supervisor Chuck Washington's office was instrumental in coordinating with community partners as the Riverside County Department of Waste Resources, Code Enforcement, the Sheriff's Department, Transportation Department, Valleywide Recreation and Park District, and Waste Management Incorporated took part in the cleanup. The team targeted a handful of areas in the third district that could be beautified to transform the locations into part of the thriving third. Supervisor Chuck Washington led off the day by addressing volunteers about the importance of taking an active role in keeping their community prosperous.
We shouldn't just rely on the government to always come in and solve the problem. We all have to do it together.
Washington then put that idea into action, but he couldn't do it alone. That's where dozens of volunteers from the Santa Cento-Hemet Valley area came in. Volunteers from Golden Era Productions focused their efforts on the bridge at the state and Saboba intersection. It was once marred with graffiti and illegal dumping, but got a clean slate, complete with a fresh coat of paint provided by the Department of Waste Resources. Volunteers from the Val Vista Assembly of God concentrated on the alleyways of Marine Drive. It received some landscape work courtesy of Riverside Sheriff's Captain Leonard Purvis, while volunteers removed litter and illegally dumped bulky items. It was a similar story for a vacant lot off New Chicago Avenue, as youth volunteers from the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints teamed up to remove an old mattress and other illegally dumped items. The Transportation Department also trimmed trees on Stanford Street near Hemet High School. Meanwhile, just blocks away from the cleanup sites, the Department of Waste Resources held a community cleanup event, allowing residents to self-haul items they wanted to dispose of for free. By noon on this Saturday cleanup, the results were picture-perfect, showing that when we work together, we contribute to the thriving third.
Great jobs, Supervisor Washington. I'd like to give my address. Needs some help at the house. Okay. Good job. And again, to Waste Management. I don't think they're here yet. Hans is there. He had a great presentation yesterday on the new app that's coming up on graffiti and illegal dumping, so great progress being made, Hans, as you can see by what's happened in Supervisor Washington's district. Thank you. There are no other members wishing to... Okay Supervisor, speakers or colleagues, when you wish to speak, please press your button. Thank you. That's all right. Supervisor Ashley.
Hitting all the wrong buttons this morning. See how we get this started. This may be a short presentation. There we go. Got to go backwards. Okay, you sort of see what's coming now. On Thursday, I had the pleasure of attending the first five Riverside Community Conversations event held at the city of Beaumont. First five did a wonderful job highlighting important facts, statistics for children all over our district, and they're working on a strategic vision plan, and they're going, having meetings all over the county. That was the one right here is the one that we had in the fifth district. It's in Beaumont Civic Center. And then on the September 16th, it's also my birthday, but on Friday was one day ahead, but it started one day, but it ended at midnight, the 16th, and the staff attended the 207th anniversary, the commencement of Mexico's independence, El Grito, at the Moreno Valley College. The event had a great turnout of over 2,000 people. It was full of music, dance, and laughter as the crowd celebrated their cultural heritage and cheered on the performers. In the fifth district, Chief of Staff Jaime Hurtado had a huge role in making that all happen. It was a great, great event. And then you see some of the things there. Then we had the Fourth Angle Boys and Girls Club of Menifee, Kayla, and that was on the same night, and other staff attended that. The event had a wonderful video showcasing the fun, safe activities they offered children at their after-school care program, including tutoring sessions, arts, crafts, and sports. Congratulations to the Boys and Girls Club, who have helped over 3,000 families in the surrounding area so far, and for the many more you'll do in the future. When I first became supervisor, there was no Boys and Girls Club at all in the fifth district. Now we have them in Paris, in Menifee, and in the Pass, and also in the Moreno Valley. So we really come a long way. We used to have nothing, and that was... It shows the spirit of the volunteers and the people that want to get involved and do something positive. And also, I just want to say Supervisor Washington, way to go. That was a great job you did out there, and your volunteers to clean up that area. That's fantastic. Thank you.
Excuse me. Thank you Supervisor Ashley. Supervisor Perez.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. Thank you. Let's see here. Get this going. All right. I also want to echo the sentiment Supervisor Maria Nasty. You know, you see something like that, it's very inspirational, no matter where it is, especially in Riverside County. I just also want to thank Riverside County Economic Development Agency for the great work, VPSS as well, Employment Development Department, State Council on Developmental Disabilities. There were quite a bit of partners, and Fantasy Springs Casino. We just held the 22nd Valleywide Employment Expo, and there were over 100 employers, as you can tell, that were there offering positions for our folks. They need a job, right? And that's something that we're always trying to do, is ensure that we get people back to work and improve upon our economy. And so that was a good, great expo, a good time I spent there with the folks. I want to thank everybody for participating and for putting that on. We also had an opportunity to greet all the different volunteer professional doctors, dentists, optometrists that flew in, also known as the Flying Doctors. This is an event that's been held for many years now. I remember even up to 10 years ago, when I first got involved with community health centers, and it's an event that takes place every year. It used to be twice a year, now it's once a year, just because of the fact that through the Affordable Care Act, you have more folks that are insured. But nonetheless, though, there are individuals that are not insured, and there are individuals that don't have access to healthcare. And so the Flying Doctors event is a big deal because you still get hundreds of people, if not thousands of people, to come to access care, and so there's Lucy right there in that picture to the left there hanging out there. She's actually been an organizer of this event for many, many, many years, and she's very dedicated and continues doing the great work. And if folks are interested and... And if folks are interested, and they're willing to come out and drive to the fourth district, we're going to have a groundbreaking ceremony on the 21st at 10:00 AM of our new DPSS building, which is long overdue. And so we're going to be getting together at the Coachella Veterans Memorial Park, and the, the actual building itself, the facility is a 30,000 square foot facility, and obviously we're going to have many assistance type of programs that would be facilitated out of that facility. And we're looking forward to and see which, and quite frankly, once again, it's long overdue, it's not only for the people of Casino Coachella, but you know, all the unincorporated areas, when you think about Mecat, Thermo, Oasis, North Shore, Soundsea, all those individuals will be able to access the DPSS building. And that's the end of my presentation. Thank you so much, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you Supervisor Perez. There are no other members wishing to speak at this point in time, so we will now go to memorial adjournments, colleagues. Any? I see no one wishing to speak, so thank, we do?
I do.
Okay. Supervisor Perez.
I'd like to adjourn in memory of Arlene Doris Posy Zimmerman, passed away at the age of 84. Arlene was a Woodrow Wilson Fellowship recipient who attended the University of California Berkeley in the 1960s, and associated with the poets, writers, philosophers of those exciting times. She was active in the feminist movement in the Bay Area when she met Arlene Rosenthal, her life partner for 49 years. Arlene Zimmerman was a lover of music, an organic gardener, and a writer of novels, short stories, plays, and poetry. She supported her partner, Arlene, through her work in the community as president of the well and the desert, and opera arts while raising two cents. She will be dearly missed. I move to adjourn in memory of Arlene Zimmerman, as well as other community members that I wish to mention, by the name of William Robert WR Bob Scott, as well as Patty Dele Caruso.
Thank you Supervisor, thank you Supervisor Perez.
Thank you, Sir.
Any others? All right, seen none, we'll call for a motion on the adjournments. A motion on the second. Motion is unanimous, thank you colleagues, this now goes to our memorial, oh, excuse me, our executive officer, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just real briefly, this board continues to push us to become more innovative and better utilize technology across our departments, and so I just thought it'd be worthy to recognize that Riverside County has recently been named one of the nation's top 10 digital counties by the Center for Digital Government and the National Association of Counties. And so I just want to recognize Dave Rogers, our IT Director, and Tom Mullen, for the good work that they're doing on our broadband project, for the digital inclusion project, and also for open data platforms. So, good work to all of you, and keep it up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson, great job, IT, Dave, and team. All right, state budget update, Mr. Standey, would you like to come up and give us an overview now that the session is over and we're waiting signatures by the governor?
Good morning, Mr. Chair members. As you just mentioned, the legislature has adjourned for the year, and there are a number of bills on the governor's desk, so we will wait to see what he signs or vetoes, but just to give you a brief overview, if we recall, we started the year kind of on our heels with the unwinding of the IHSS memo, or MOU, and would have represented about a $40 million hit to the county, that we really went all out effort for, and that took about five or six months to finally come out on the good end of that, where now, and Mr. Johnson, you may know better than I, I think we're actually going to end positive maybe in our payments for IHSS this year by a little bit, and not, not take that hit, but it will, it will be revisited, I'm sure, in the next two years. But as we solved that problem, we got knocked back on our heels again on AB 1250, which would have basically eliminated contracting out for the county, and a kind of a cousin bill, AB 1603, that would have done a similar thing with our county hospital and nurse registries and so forth. Both of those bills have been placed on hold, and are two-year bills now at this point, so we will see what happens next year, and if not next year, I'm sure the year after that, they're not going away. A few of the bills, though, that I would like to talk about that, the county sponsored and helped write was SB 438, which Susan Von Zabron worked very hard on, which is a successor guardianship bill, that if a guardian of a child is incapacitated or death, there's a successor in place, so that child does not have to be placed into foster care. That bill was passed on the governor's desk. AB 22, which is an original idea of Steve Reniker, that's now gone, but had a great idea for expanding trusted systems, to put those in the cloud, and then that bill has passed as well. AB 1401, which County Council Priamos was very active in his protective custody warrant, that if a child is a, even if it's not a dependent, dependency petition, a judge may issue that protective custody warrant. AB 1200, Anna Martinez worked very closely with her association on, that our local Assembly Woman Cervantes carried, which established the Aging Disability Resource Center to provide information on long-term care and improve access. Three bills that we had opposed, besides the two previous ones I mentioned, had passed. SB 249, Off-Highway Vehicle Bill, which will, I think, kind of wind down that program at some point. We oppose that, that's on the governor's desk. SB 249, Sell Site Towers, that'll basically bypass government authority to place them, that is passed on the governor's desk. And ACA 12, which would expand boards to seven members if you're five million or more people, and also have an elected CEO with that. That bill is actually a two-year bill now. There are two bonds that are going to be placed on the November ballot, a $4 billion housing bond, and a $4 billion Parks and Wildlife bond. There was a slew of housing bills, which we won't get into, but probably 10 different bills trying to solve to some degree our housing shortage, but that's kind of a brief overview, Mr. Chair, if there's any questions?
Thank you, Brian. Any questions, colleagues, for Mr. Standey? Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian, appreciate it very much. All right. That concludes our state budget update, and comments by members of the board, now go into any changes or corrections, deletions to the agenda, Madam Clerk.
Good morning. Additions, deletions, and corrections are none. Notations, item 17.1, the department is requesting continuance to October 17, 2017. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Keisha. To October 17. All right. Thank you, Keisha. Now it takes us to our admin action calendar, 1-1 through 1-12. Any items to be pulled, colleagues? Any speakers on these, Keisha? Second. Have a motion, second? Please vote. Motion is unanimous. Thank you, taken to our consent calendar. We, I didn't vote, oh, well, push the button.
You're here, though, we can see you.
Okay, thank you. Taking us to 2-1 and 2-4, 2-1 through 2-4 consent calendar. Please vote, we have a motion, I'll move it.
Move approval. I already have a motion, I'll second.
Executed by Supervisor Washington, please vote.
Got it.
Motion is unanimous. Now to our policy calendar, colleagues, any items to be pulled? Start with Supervisor Ashley.
Yes, I'd like, I like item 3-2-8, and along with the same time, I think we could take up 13-1 and 13-2, because they're all related, to talk about them all at the same time, have a presentation on that, it's very, very important, adding to our trail system and Salt Creek Channel between City Hemet and Menifee, it's a big, big deal. And then also 3-2-9.
Is that all you had? It's 3-2-8 Supervisor Ashley?
Yep.
And 3-2-9?
Well, yeah, we only pulled 3-2-8 and 3-2-9.
No others to be pulled, my colleagues?
Yeah.
Any speakers, Madam Clerk?
No.
All right. We have a motion, and a second by Supervisor Washington, please vote.
Okay, and 3-2-8 is the federal funding cooperative agreement between the RCTC and the county for the approval of the agreement between the County Riverside and Riverside County Regional Park and Open Space District for the Salt Creek Trail Project within the cities of Menifee and Hemet, and the third and fifth districts. So I'd like a presentation, a lot of people involved in this, in TLMA and Parks. Is anybody here that can speak to that? Here we go. Here comes Scott Bangle, and here comes Patty Romo, so we got it covered here.
Mr. Bangle, on behalf of Supervisor Jeffries, I want to welcome you back today.
Thank you, I understand I was missed. So, good morning, here's Scott Bangle, Park District General Manager. I'm pleased today to share an exciting and much anticipated project here in Riverside County. This project is known as Salt Creek. Salt Creek is a proposed 16-mile multipurpose regional trail, is one of five planned backbone regional trails here in Riverside County. I'd like to introduce Patricia Romo to give you some details, will stand around answering questions you may have.
Patty?
Okay, Patty, let's, yeah, tell us a little bit about how this all came together and involved, give us a little background.
Sure, and maybe Scott can provide some background. Oh, good morning, Patty Romo, Transportation Director. This project came about, RCTC had a call for projects, they had some CMAC money to relieve, to mitigate for air pollution, and so this was a perfect candidate for that, to put this trail project. The county competed for that money, Parks had a master plan for the 16-mile segment that you see here. So we put in an application to build a portion of the master plan facility, and we were successful in getting that, the funding for that, and we've been moving forward with the development of the design of that project. What we're proposing to do of that entire, entire 16-mile segment, this is an opportunity for us to get started on that project by constructing a couple of pieces, and the piece that we're going to get started on for first is the part over in Menifee, and then a small segment over on the east side in Hemet. And so that completes a portion of the project, where we'll provide bicycle path, pedestrian path, and room for horses and others, it'll be a multipurpose trail.
Good. Now, this is a wonderful start, Scott, do you have anything?
Yeah, we have some guests here I'd like to acknowledge, two of our Parks Commissioners, Marty Rosen, I believe is here, and Bill Zimmerman, the back in the back. Marty's been a champion of this project since day one, as you have as well Supervisor, so we're excited. Again, this is one of five backbone regional trails in the county, it's very important, they're all interconnected, so we're excited to get started. The item for you today simply marries the two departments in a collaboration. Transportation will be providing the construction documents, the environmental work, and the construction management.
Okay, and then you got items on your, your Park District agenda, it's 13-1 and 2 are implementing that, so we can handle all three of those together, would that be all right, Council? Okay? Okay, first of all, I'd like to really thank the folks, the Commissioners that worked on this. I know Marty Rosen has worked on this tirelessly for, I mean, for years, and he's working, he's also on the City of Menifee Trails Commission, so he's been working at it from two different angles, and he's actually helped solve a lot of the problems connected with these trails, and we really owe him a great debt of gratitude. Thank you, Marty, and thank you all the Commissioners that worked on that. And I move approval of item 3.28, 13-1, and 13-2.
Okay Supervisor, we do have a motion and a second by Supervisor Washington, and before we go to a vote, you can all please vote, we have comments. Supervisor Washington?
Yes, thank you. The project that Supervisor Ashley spoke so eloquently about is the fifth district and also the third district, so, good job. As long as that, he said everything else, so, thank you.
Okay, well, there's just got a long ways to go Supervisor, we're looking to you to get it done.
Great, thank you. The motion was approved 5-0. That, wow, that concludes our policy calendar.
And we have item 3.29.
3.29.
And it's, it's an easy one, and we, you've all heard about California Water Fix, and you know, we've had the problems in the Delta for years, you know, we, when, you know, and the salt water's intruding and so forth, and the Delta smelt, and we're entitled to what, 2 million acre feet of, here, water or more out of that, we're not getting even half that, you know, a fraction of that. Many times, as they can't, when there's adequate water, it's rained, we still can't pump, and so this, this, the Water Fix is going to take two tunnels underneath the Delta, so it won't be subject, you know, you won't be pumping the Delta, we can have a continuous flow. You may not get a lot more water out of there, but you're going to be able to consistently get water, and we, now, some years we get very little. It's a wonderful thing, it's going to be paid for by the water users, like everything ultimately is, it's going to cost us all about a dollar, 70, 80 cents on our water bill, and when they, it's done, it's going to take years and years to do it, so don't get excited, your water rates aren't going to go up for a while, and they'll probably go up gradually. So this is a wonderful thing, and we're just starting to support the Metropolitan Water District's efforts, and all the efforts statewide to get this done. It took a lot of work by the state, you know, over many years, Governor Brown was a, was a strong champion of this, and we managed to get the very complex environmental document done, Supervisor Perez, and Zira Jeffries probably worked on this when they were in the assembly, and various sorts of this, so they're very familiar with this effort, so, it's here, I mean, we ought to support this effort with a resolution, and I so moved. Here, I'll second, somebody's already made the motion.
Okay, thank you Supervisor Ashley. Do you have a motion? Supervisor Washington, seconded by Supervisor Ashley, please vote. Motion is unanimous 5-0. Now, that concludes our policy calendar. We have no items on our other business items, other than public comment at this point. I don't think so. I'm sorry, 12.1, Waste Resource Management District, this is not a public hearing, I move approval of 12-1. Motion and second, please vote, Supervisors Perez and Ashley and Jeffries. Motion is unanimous, 5-0. No Housing Authority Corporation, public comment, Madam Clerk.
Yes, Sir, we have four speakers. The first is Darrell Tarrell, followed by Charles Smith, who will be followed by Eileen Whiting, and then Yandra Thomas, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Darrell, before you speak, I'd like to remind the speakers, you each have three minutes. Please watch your light in front of you, when the yellow light starts flashing, you have 30 seconds remaining, and then your time will be cut off at three minutes, and you're always on time Darrell, so welcome back.
Well, I went to, went to a family reunion, got to see my dad, haven't seen in 12 years. I want to say good morning to you, and we cannot deny the reality of our fiscal challenges and the impact it has on our people and our communities, from one end of this county to the other end. You can ask anybody in this building and throughout this county if times are tough, they say, yeah, it's tough, but we're tougher because we're in this together, and we rise and fall together as one people and one county. When I think of the tough times we have been through as a nation and as a community, I'm reminded of the leadership of President Kennedy, who led this nation through some times of uncertainty and division, but what he saw in our challenges wasn't pessimism, but a can-do spirit that brought this country together to do big things, and that moved this country forward to a new frontier. That's why on May 25, 1961, President Kennedy, before a joint session of Congress, made a promise to his generation that we would go to the moon, in his words, but not because it's easy, but because it's hard. He realized that we as a people can do big things, we can reach great heights, we can rise to any challenges, despite our differences, if we work together for a common purpose. On July 20 of 1969, we did. That's what lead- That's what leadership is. It's choosing to do the hard things, to accept the challenges of our time, to fight for goals that may seem impossible, and to bring people together to see them accomplished. This is a difficult time for our county. Cidicism is fashionable these days. When times are tough, I know it can be easy to give in to cynicism. It can be easy to give in to fear and doubt. It can be easy to turn on one another. That's what our fiscal challenges have done in this county. And we cannot allow that to happen. But I want everybody just here to remember, that's not who we are. That's not the county I know. We don't give up. We do not turn on each other. We don't quit. We appeal to the better angels of our nature. That's why cynicism is a bad choice. That's why hope is a better choice. Hope is what gives us courage. Hope is the belief that better days are ahead. That's why I am confident that we, as a county, can meet our fiscal challenges and move our county to a new frontier. Because whenever times have seemed at their worst, we have been at our best. Because we're in this together, and we rise and fall together as one community, one people, one nation, and one county. Thank you.
Thank you, Darrell. You just keep getting better and better. Good work. Madam Clerk, next speaker.
Thank the building for that, for the little prayer in the front. And we're all liars, and we all fall short. And also, I'm reminded of Orwell with the Board of Supervisors, and they're all pigs, and they said, "All pigs are equal, but some pigs are more equal." So what I'm here for, example, I was attacked by simply trying to make an appointment with Mr. Tavelloni a couple of years ago. It was all recorded. Now, while the CD was in their possession, five minutes of the attack in the beginning were erased, five minutes at the end of the attack were erased. The Melzer, or the lady up here, the redhead, I tried to make the appointment, and she says, "I don't do the ADA." This is all on a police report. Also, the Assistant ADA lady upstairs, also, I think her name was Melzer, she said on the police report that I went over to the Superior Court and made the ADA coordinator scream and yell. She put that on the police report. That was proven also in the Superior Court trial that they drug out for a year and a half after they had simply beat me, but they arrested me, but didn't put down why. I'm saying all this because you guys have done nothing about any of this. I have all these things here. They're documented, Superior Court. Also, the ADA says that the leader of any entity, there's no excuse for the head of any entity not to know the American Disabilities Act due to the technical assistance manuals available through the United States Department of Justice. And most of all, that for not disseminating that information. So example, when the lady said, "I don't do the ADA," you know, that you didn't disseminate it. Also, to recall, about two weeks ago, I called up to talk to Mr. Tavelloni again, and I was told by all the assistants for the entire Board of Supervisors that they don't have to know the ADA. But yet, in 2015, when you hired just a nice guy, and you found out he was an epileptic, you fired him, then you spent thousands of dollars trying not to hire him. So I'm simply going to let you know that I'm not the guy here that attacks little people, you know, and puts them out of business. My goal here is to do a 1983, which is individually sue all of you guys, because I have documented proof tapes, recordings of everybody doing everything. And I don't think that the county should pay for these things. You guys have simply stepped out. You're not following the law. You're making decisions outside of federal law. And I'm just going to do something about it. That's all. And I thank you very much. So I'm going to send you individual letters.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, Madam Clerk.
Eileen Whiting.
Well, the speaker's coming up. I wanted to call out Bill Zimmerman. I didn't see him back there. Bill, wave your hand. Bill's also on the trails and parks, and he's worked very hard and effectively on this too. He and Marty have worked shoulder to shoulder on this. And I should have mentioned that, and I apologize, but I want to call Bill. He's been great. Thank you for coming down here today, both of you. Okay.
Good morning, supporters.
My name is Eileen Whiting. I'm the lead organizer for the United Domestic Workers of America here in Riverside County. Also, we represent 26,184 home care workers here in Riverside. We're here today because the county and UDW has had a really good relationship over the years, bargaining one of the best and highest contracts here in Southern California. We set the standards for our home care providers, and we also let them know that their work matters. But recently, we have not been able to start negotiations. We have not gotten any dates. And so we feel that that relationship is going out of the window, going out the window. Especially since the county has hired a law firm, Libber, Cassidy, and Whitmore. That tells us that that relationship has been strained. This particular law group, they are very adversarial, and we want to make sure that we have a smooth negotiations. We're not asking for a lot of bells and whistles through our bargaining process. You know, we're not asking for, you know, pensions or, you know, 401K plans or anything like that. We want to make sure that we have, we keep the highest standards of wages for home care workers here in California. The bottom line is that, you know, there hasn't, you know, like I said, we haven't had, we're not asking for bells and whistles like other unions here in the county. We're asking for the county to bargain in good faith with UDW. We recently worked with CSAC to secure funding for the county. We worked with the governor to make sure that realignment is reimbursed to the county in a timely manner. So again, we just ask that we have a good bargaining session and that we bargain in good faith. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Last speaker.
Final speaker.
Yandra Thomas.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Thomas.
I just want to read a letter for you, and then I'll give it to your clerk to pass to you. Dear Supervisors, the Riverside Alliance for Boys and Men of Color would like to first express our sincere gratitude for considering and approving $150,000 in funding to improve the lives of the Riverside County youth. However, the Alliance would like to express our deep concern regarding the request. And although the amount was approved unanimously in the budget, your office staff and the county staff has been unable to locate it within the budget. And we've learned that the 150 has been reduced now to 50,000. And since the beginning of this process, the Riverside Alliance for Boys and Men of Color have acted in good faith, and that your commitment would be honored. However, we're concerned about this now. We're requesting a personal meeting to get clarification on the issue as soon as possible, because our children are still in need of these funds to realize their potential and to contribute in the communities in a meaningful way. And we ask that you help us deliver on this commitment to our children. And if you can simply direct us to someone who can help us resolve this issue and work directly with you, that would be very much appreciated. And if you can contact us directly to schedule this meeting, you know, the Alliance would very much appreciate it. And I have this for you, so.
Yeah. Remember, you were heard during our budget.
I'm sorry?
I remember you did have representatives here during our budget discussion making a request, but I don't recall any approval on that.
It was approved when you sent out the budget. It was initially approved as accepted by Mr. McDonald, and then when you came back in July, I was here, and it was also approved on the budget, so.
No, I didn't.
We have it in here.
I don't know where that was. We don't typically allow people to come forward and make requests at the budget, other than department heads and agency heads. We remember you making comment, but as for that being inserted into the budget, I don't think that, my colleagues, or I recall that that was approved, nor does the executive officer.
Fair enough that you recall, but we do have the actual budget that you sent. We got it from Mr. McDonald's office, and it was approved as a line item in the bottom. So if you need, I can, again, resupply that for you where it was.
We'll get a report back from the executive office.
Absolutely. So, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. All right. That concludes our speaker, colleagues. We are 45 minutes ahead of our public hearings. Therefore, we're going to have to adjourn to executive session and reconvene at 10:30 a.m.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chair. Oh, that's right. My apology.
17-1 is going to be canceled.
17-1 is canceled. We can't take an action on it until 10:30. So we still have to come back at 10:30.
We'll have to come back at 10:30 to act on the continuance. Yeah, or later.
So we will.
And let's go to the close session.
We will reconvene at 10:30. Ladies and gentlemen, we'll adjourn to executive session for the next 45 minutes. Madam Clerk, or Madam Counselor.
Yes, we'll now go into executive session for the items that are listed on the agenda. I don't anticipate any reportable actions. We'll come back after that.
For those of you that are still here, sir, for those of you that are still here, we Till October 17. Motion Supervisor Washington. Seconded by Jeffries. Please vote. Good night, everyone. Meeting is adjourned.
We adjourned.
Thank you, Supervisor. Ashley. Before noon.
Wait, keep us, wait, keep us up. Hey.